We have a lengthy welcome back to fall. Thirteen items, policy items on the agenda. We'll just start with the minutes. Anybody have any issues with the minutes?
No. So we'll...
Second.
Those who have one?
Fine.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. So we have thirteen policy items. Vice Chancellor Weinshol will walk us through them. The second item on the list before you was the CUNY Law School one. We're gonna put on the side and do an executive session at the end of the listing of the rest of the items. And then we'll come back into regular session after that. You're on.
I'm on. Hello, everybody. Welcome back from summer. We have two presentations that we're gonna be doing this afternoon, and then we'll go into the policy items. The first presentation is a project that has had a long history here at CUNY. It's the new flitboard building at New York City Tech. And I think, as this committee knows, we were originally gonna do this as a public-private partnership with Forest City Rattner. And due to the fact that there were economic changes, both in the economy as a whole and with our project, we opted to do this project on our own, just as a CUNY project. We were very fortunate that Forest City had hired an excellent firm to originally work on this project, and they continue to work on it even when Forest City brought aboard Renzo Piano, and that was Perkins Eastman. And as a result, it has really saved us a lot of time in terms of redesigning this building for both CUNY and for New York City Tech. And so whereas under the old scenario, our building was getting less efficient and more expensive, now our building is very efficient and hopefully a little less expensive. So I would like to introduce two folks from Perkins Eastman. Aaron Schwartz, who's a partner at the firm and has taken, I guess he's the lead on this project, and Mindy Ngo, who's also with Perkins Eastman. And they're gonna take us through the design of what we believe is truly gonna be a spectacular building, both for the university and for downtown Brooklyn. So I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you, everyone. This has been a fabulous opportunity. Working on this project, we really very much enjoyed it, and are still enjoying it. And thank you very much. It's a great team. As you may know, the project itself is replacing the flitboard building, which is basically at the corner or along J Street, at J Street and at Tillery. I don't know if I have a remote on this, I mean, a... Oh, I do. So, but you can't see it. There it is. So this is the site of the building that's right here. This is J Street. This is just a plan of the existing campus, the existing campus right here. And what's phenomenal about this project is not only its program, but also its sighting in that it's located at this amazing corner. This is the approach to the Brooklyn Bridge. So it's really a fantastic site within Brooklyn itself. Here's a blow-up of that site here. And here, once again, you can see, here's J Street. Here's what's referred to as Tech Place. This is Tillery. And this is the existing main building of the City Tech campus, which is in here, which also occupies other portions of that block. So the program itself is quite diverse. It includes a 1,000-seat auditorium. It includes an 800-seat spectator gymnasium. It includes about 16 general classrooms. It also includes clinical space and allied health spaces in terms of curriculum. We also, as a part of that, we have a public function for CUNY Tech, which is at this corner, right in here, which is similar to the facility that you have on 42nd Street. So as a blow-up of the plan, you can see that we have this quite impressive lobby, which is here, coming into the building. We have, this is the corner, which is very present from Tillery Street, which is running up in this corner, and J Street. From this lobby, there is a pretty well-defined security system allowing public use of the 1,000-seat auditorium, as well as dropping below grade to the 800-seat spectator gymnasium, which sits right underneath that, and then coming through to the general classroom space on the ground floor, or rising up through the escalators and elevator systems to the classrooms and labs above. To note, the building is being designed to a sustainable level of LEED silver. It's also obviously meeting all the new codes, the most recent codes for the city, as well as all the ADA requirements. As we move up through the building, the lobby itself becomes a multi-story space at that corner, whereas then the building footprint, in this case, becomes laboratory spaces for the allied health departments, and we come up through these escalators, and then eventually an elevator system through the building. Here you can see a balcony, which has been built into the auditorium. And the reason we've done that is not only to compact the auditorium footprint itself, but also that they can use this facility with a smaller population and not feel that it's empty, that feel that it's still quite manageable and a human scale. And at the same time, when they fill it up to 1,000 seats, it works for that larger capacity. Once the lobby ends and we're over, which I'll show you in some of the perspectives in a moment, then the footprint goes all the way overhead and over that auditorium. And here you get, once again, a full component of laboratories on this end of the building, and then faculty offices over here looking on Tillery. In section, you can see how complex really the building is, because under J Street is a subway. So we have to stay out of the subway system, so we've actually backed off of that wall in order to save us some costs and complexities with the subway system. There's also, which was learned early on in the first phase of this project, there's water below a certain table around here, around 40 feet. So we've limited our excavation, so the gymnasium actually sits here underneath the auditorium seats, which you're beginning to see in this design development drawing at this end. And then hovering above is that classroom block, which is here. When we begin, we're just at the end of the design development phase, and hoping to begin construction documents over the next few weeks. CUNY is now going through the review of our documents. This is a shot of, one of the shots from the lobby. Coming in, you can see there's a security point here, the turnstiles, the security desk, the volume of the auditorium that you're entering here. There's actually a classroom space that looks over that lobby, and you'll see in a moment there's even cafe space that then, from above, looks over into the lobby itself. So it could be really quite an attractive space, not only for the students, faculty, that use it every day, but also for public events and other CUNY activities that could happen here at the college. This is a section through the auditorium itself, and you can see the intimacy of the space, in that it's not very deep, but yet still provides for 1,000 seats, which is quite nice. And then, once again, below here is the gymnasium with its own spectator seating below. So you're starting to see here now the renderings as we finish them from the design development phase. And a few things that we tried to do, especially here, was, one, we were very concerned, now CUNY and the design, and the rest of the design team, about the pedestrian point of view. So all of the general classroom spaces, and most of the spaces that can be transparent, are located very close to the ground floor. So as your, the lobby is here on this corner of Tillery and J, and at this point is the approach to the Brooklyn Bridge. So what we've done here is really opened up the bottom floor, and the bottom floors are predominantly glazed, allowing a lot of natural light as well as view into those spaces, so that the students and others in the community can see what's happening in the building. And then the laboratories and other classroom spaces are hovering above in this volume here. And here you can see that's juxtaposed over the auditorium volume, which is in this case. The materials that we're looking at is using terracotta rainscreen, which is the materials that are here, a series of colored and clear and spandrel glazing in the window wall itself. And it's quite, I think, an efficient system, as well as some channel glazing here. So the idea is, even in the evening hours, the building becomes a beacon. So the auditorium itself will actually, which you'll see in a moment more closely, is this whole edge of the auditorium will glow in the evening as the traffic moves by on Tillery Street. So it's gonna become quite the identifier for the college and the system. This is a view that many of us will probably not see, but this is from the Westinghouse Building. There is a high school, which is located adjacent to our site. And in fact, we, part of this arrangement is taking over land, I believe that was under the stewardship of DOE, Department of Education, in this lot here. And that's where we are locating this auditorium volume, which is here, and the gymnasium below. This is a part of Polytech. So we've actually taken into account the existing building that's at Polytech, as well as their ability to someday increase the size of that building if they do so, and still have the natural light and windows into our classroom spaces, as well as our lobby spaces. And then there is a park-like setting, which is private for CUNY, which allow, you're allowed access from the lobby itself, as well as the auditorium area for public assembly uses. This is from the Tech Place side. And ghosted in here is the building that's in the way that would really block this view. This is an existing building, which is the dormitory for Polytech. But just to give you a view of what the massing is like, that's the auditorium, which is in the background. You will see this, which is the piece that's on the south side, which is faculty offices and classroom spaces on the upper floors, and then actually our service space. We actually have parking for a couple dozen cars that's below grade underneath the entire facility. And this is a view in the evening hours, and you can see here that you can begin to see at least the idea of these translucent, as opposed to transparent, glass pieces, both on the auditorium side, as well as here towards CUNY Express, which is at this corner, that can glow in the evening and really give quite a presence for the college, as well as Brooklyn on this major approach. And that's all I have for you, unless you have questions.
Thank you. I see Russ came in, and I just, you know, Russ and his staff have been tremendous partners with us on this project, and we've really enjoyed working with them. We did something quite unique here for CUNY. After we came up with an initial design, we basically did a charrette with Russ's architecture staff. And I don't know, Russ, maybe you wanna talk a little bit about that and what came out of it? I thought it was a very good experience that we had.
Yes, thank you. We have a number of architects on staff, and they did a little critique, and there was a little back and forth here, but we think at the end of the process, they tried to make clear some of the needs of the particular departments that will be building. This building is largely science and health programs, and as you hear, it's a fairly complex building internally, and putting the gym and theater aside, the laboratory structure is quite complex. I would just say that the students and the faculty are in place. We need the building.
We hear you. Are there any questions from the committee?
Since it's a laboratory building, I assume that there must be fume hoods for the laboratories, delivery options for supplies for the laboratories. Is there, could you comment on that? Possibly?
Sure, that's correct. There are fume hoods throughout. There's chemical storage throughout. It's a relatively complex mechanical system, and we have some very good engineers on this project, as well as CUNY's own staff, looking through the other science labs that have been built, and a lot of lessons learned in the development of the mechanicals for that.
Where did you place the science labs? The what labs? Are they throughout the building, or are they on the bottom floor or the top floor?
They're towards the upper levels of the building. What we tried to do, which was a major strategy of the building, is not only do laboratories make more sense, because obviously the fume hood's closer to the top, but the biggest issue for a building, a, which most people in the suburbs never understand, and we all know, is moving students through a building that's multi-story is the most difficult issue. So what we used is, we actually have three escalators on the lower levels, and tried to get the higher population more transient, general classroom space as low in the building as possible, to reduce the amount of volume on the elevator and escalator system, which happened to work in addition with this idea of bringing the labs higher in the building.
Great, thank you.
And just to give you a sense, I mean, the building is 300,000...
It's about 350,000 square feet.
So it's, Karen, it's almost as big as the John, it's half the size of the John Jay building. A little bit more, but almost half.
And...
And, yeah, and the gym, yes.
And you know that at John Jay, we argued before you were vice chancellor, unfortunately, that our science labs should be up at the top, and they're at the bottom of a 13-story building. We're, so I'm glad to see it's being done the right way, under Vice Chancellor Weinshol's...
Well, yes, and I think we all worked together, because, once again, we didn't want the building to be all core of elevators and not space for students and faculty.
Of course, of course.
Estimated cost?
Our estimate now, soft costs and hard costs, about 400 million.
One other question. Where are deliveries for the building?
I'm sorry.
Where's the loading dock?
Oh, I'm sorry. On the, on the Tech Place side, the opposite end of here, the exact opposite, there's a loading dock, which is, there is a garage door as well, which also hides the ramp that goes down towards the garage below.
It's got elevators right next to it.
Those loading docks are immediately adjacent to a service elevator system that works on that end of the building, as opposed to the pedestrian or student-focused vertical circulation, which is FASM. Paul, do you agree?
Thank you.
And the facility that Aaron was referring to is that we're hoping to put a CUNY-first, CUNY...
Express?
Express. CUNY Express facility in a building. You know, this part of downtown Brooklyn gets a tremendous amount of foot traffic, and it would be a great presence for CUNY. And in a building that we own, and we don't have to then lease or beg a landlord for ground-floor retail space.
Great.
Good, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. You need this chair.
I think I need that.
I'll bring it.
Is tenure like Edison Jackson?
No. Yeah. 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 Presentation up. So I'm gonna do a very brief presentation. It's not a 350,000-square-foot building. It's not, didn't cost us anywhere near, close to 400 million. But in facilities planning, I think both, we're very proud and very excited about this project, and I know the folks at Medgar Evers, who had their doubts at the beginning, are very happy with this project as well. And what we're talking about is, we're talking about the trailers that are at Medgar Evers, right behind the Carroll Street building, which have really been used extensively by the college for classroom space and for some administrative offices. And let me just sort of give you a little bit of an overview. As everybody knows or doesn't know, we have three main buildings at Medgar Evers, the Carroll Street building, the Bedford building, which was the original building of the college. And then a couple of years ago, we added the School of Business and Student Support Services right across the street from the Bedford building. And as folks know, we have a major building under construction, which is Academic Building One, and that is moving along really, really quite, quite well. And this is just, we'll show you the various buildings. This is the Bedford building. This is the, the new support services building. And this is a rendering, although if you were to go out to Medgar Evers, pretty much you would almost see the building fully enclosed at this point. And now we're starting on the interior work. The next photo is a picture of what the trailers looked like before we started this, this project. So our goal here, why did we do this project? The trailers truly exceeded their useful life. They required emergency attention all the time. The doors did not close properly, so it was a challenge in the wintertime to be able to have classes there. The trailers experienced a high volume of students who were basically in inferior space. And we really needed to look at a more efficient use of this space and of these, of these classrooms. Basically, our project's scope was to upgrade the interiors, replace all the doors and windows, provide electrical baseboards so that we could have heat in the, in the wintertime. There was a boardwalk or a wooden walkway, which was just in total disrepair. We needed to replace that, and we needed to really repair the exterior of, of the work. We, we hired a contractor through a Jax contract. We began the construction in April of this past year, of this year. Our goal was to end the construction by August, so that we could have use of it for the fall term. And we pretty much stayed on, on schedule, and occupancy began on August 27th. And as you'll see, the total project cost was $3 million, and the construction costs were, was about $2.1 million. So in the pre-refurbished trailers, we had 14 classrooms, as I said. We had different program offices. There were restroom facilities, and there was storage. As a result of the refurbishing, we were able to add four additional classrooms, additional offices, to upgrade the restroom facilities, and to really have much more efficient storage space on the site. This is a picture of what this complex looked like before, and I don't know if you can get the full essence. Alan likes to tell a story about how he took a person from DOB there once. I don't know, Alan, maybe you wanna say, tell the story here, but...
You know the scene from League of Our Own where they say, you know, there's no crying in baseball? There was no crying in budgeting. So to be able to bring a budget official to see something and have them be in tears means you know it is awful space and absolutely inappropriate for us students.
Did she retire?
She left. She went to something else.
Not as a result of the...
So we're inviting her back to the grand opening. I just wanna point out that on the left, you see this boardwalk situation, which was abysmal. And then on the right, you can see that basically the tiles were coming up on the floor of the, of the classrooms. And around the walkways, when it rained, or we had any type of snow, we had flooding. And as a matter of fact, we're now gonna be working with the mayor's office to try and add some greenery and some trees with the Million Trees Initiative that the city is embarking on. This is just a picture of the trailers under construction. And what we basically did was, we didn't remove the foundations, because that would have required that we refile with the Buildings Department, which is something we didn't wanna do. So we basically left the foundations the way they were, and we...
Can we go back one slide?
Sure.
This is truly the worst place in the university that we've had.
Was that 12 years ago? It was bad down. Back on the road.
Didn't get any better. You know, those of you who have children of your own, picture your children going to school or building in trailers like that. Sorry.
That's okay. And as you can see, we were redoing all of the electrical work, as well as new, new ceilings to be put in, as well as refitting the doors and the exterior of the trailers. This is the refurbished trailers. You can see to the right that the exteriors look quite, quite new and quite spiffy, and these are doors that, you know, clearly work, and it really is quite nice. This is a refurbished interior of the space. You can see to the right where we've created office and workstations, and to the left is corridors. You can see that now we have dashboards in the classrooms, and it looks as good as any new construction that we are currently doing here at CUNY. I just wanna show you the last slide. We found this on one of the boards up in the room. It says, "Thank you, Medgar Evers. We love you." And one of the students put it up after they had been in the space. So, you know, it's, it's a little project, and it didn't, it didn't cost us a lot, but in the end, it was the right thing to do, and it's really gonna enhance the classroom space that the college is gonna be able to use. So we thought we would show them. Yes?
I would like to just say from Medgar Evers, they have dug the trailers, the Taj Mahal.
Oh.
And at one time, you were fighting to get out of the trailers. Now they're fighting to get in. And I'd like to thank you very much. It has made a world difference.
Thank you.
As the ultimate cynic, if there is a master plan for Medgar Evers, these are nonetheless trailers. Is this interim use? Or is there a mask? Does the master plan include greater use for these facilities or replacement with the building at some point?
To be honest with you, Medgar Evers has not had a master plan or an update since 1995. And one of the things that I have been discussing with Dr. Pollard is that we're gonna do a new master plan at Medgar Evers. You know, that which is temporary or interim at CUNY sometimes can last 20 years.
I understand.
So, you know, our goal would be, you know, our hope would be that we would be able to create yet another facility for Medgar Evers, not far from Academic Building One. Clearly, we haven't even begun to discuss it or plan it, so we're probably six to eight years away before that new building will see any life. And clearly, we'll be able to use these, these trailers as classroom space in lieu of that.
We'll make sure that I don't elevate both landmarks, though.
Yes.
I don't think we have to worry about that.
You never know.
Can we all have trailers?
Yeah, absolutely.
68 straight.
68, I love it on Park Avenue.
I don't think, I think our neighbors will be good. On the Park Avenue, we use...
Are 12 other items?
Yes. Okay.
So what would you...
I think go through the long, you know, vote on everything in the separate executive session.
Sure. Item number one is an item for City College for the North Campus High-Temperature Hot Water Distribution Center system. And it's a resolution to approve a design-build contract with Genze Engineering. And this is for design and construction services. And this, this work is required to repair or replace the entire system, distribution system, on the college's north campus. And this would authorize CU, CF, and the Dormitory Authority to move ahead with this, this contract. Item number two is a item for Hostos Community College. It's a...
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do we wait till the end of questions?
No. Go ahead.
I'm intrigued, and I've actually read this. Could this be a model for other institutions in terms of creating a separate entity? We're on item number two.
No, we're going to executive...
That's the original session.
I thought I heard you say CF.
No, no, we're gonna do that in executive.
I thought I heard you say my apologies.
That's okay. The next item is for Hostos Community College. It's to authorize CUNY to execute a construction contract on behalf of Hostos to create a new sound studio, which would be located in the 450 Grand Concourse Building. The third item is also for Hostos Community College. This is a resolution to authorize CUNY to accept the design by Gosh... This is a resolution to authorize CUNY to accept the design by Goshour Architects, who had been working on the 500 Grand Street building. And this would include a, the work on the fifth floor, a new roof to the building, and a restoration of the restrooms on all the floors except the first floor, which we've already restored the, the restrooms on that floor under a separate contract. The fourth item is for Hunter College. It's for the campus school. It's a new public address system and clock system. And this resolution would authorize CUNY to execute a construction contract on behalf of the Hunter College campus to build this new code-compliant, school-wide, integrated public address.
This is the first public address system in a public school. So this is urgent, we thank you for moving ahead on this because there's no way to communicate.
The fifth item is for Hunter College. It is for their experimental psychology lab renovation. And this would authorize CUNY to execute a, a construction contract on behalf of Hunter to renovate this experimental psychology lab. The sixth item is also a Hunter College item. And we've been working quite a long time on this project. And this has to do with Thomas Hunter Hall. It's a restoration of Thomas Hunter Hall. And we would accept the design by superstructure engineers on behalf of the college. This would not only restore the facade of the building, it would replace all the windows and do a lot of the work that this structure is in desperate, desperate need of. The seventh item is for John Jay College. It's an amendment to a prior resolution for the Harrenhal roof replacement. Originally, we were just going to do half the roof at Harrenhal. But in light of the fact that we have gotten a, quite a bit of critical maintenance money, we thought it wise that if we're going to do half the roof, we might as well do the whole roof. And so now we're coming back and asking for approval to increase the project amount by about a, a million seven to do the entire roof.
But it's a change in scope, not a.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
And welcome because the roof leaks all the time.
Yes.
And has been since the building was open, actually. So it would be nice to see it done and done properly.
The, yes. The, the eighth item is an item for Lehman College for the Student Life Building. It's an, a resolution to authorize CUNY, to authorize CUCF to execute a construction contract on behalf of Lehman College for the renovation of the Student Life Building. The ninth item is an item for Medgar Evers College. Again, it's an amendment to the prior resolution, which we had brought to the board for the library expansion. And here we are asking for authorization to increase the contract amount so that we can do the job properly and as the architects set out for this project. The tenth item is for York College. It's the science building upgrades for the new nursing program at, at York College. And this resolution would authorize the execution of a construction manager build contract on behalf of York College for upgrades to the science building. The next item is an item that we are asking authorization for DASNY to proceed with the sale of the residence at 169 East 79th Street. For those on the committee who, who are aware, the university owns a townhouse, which in the past has been used both by previous chancellors as well as many college presidents have lived there on an interim basis. We no longer have any use for the townhouse. And so about a year ago, we put it up for sale. And we have now a contract that we vented into with a buyer, but we need approval from this committee to be able to proceed with that contract. And the last item is one that we're asking for authorization to proceed with the project to create graduate student housing for the university. As everybody knows, we purchased the site for the Hunter School of Social Work and Public Health. And as a matter of fact, we came to this committee and with the board, our intention was to build faculty housing on the site. We tried the best we could in terms of a pro forma to make this project work. The project just came in too high. As Jennifer liked to point out to me, her faculty could go across the street and rent an apartment from us at a lot lower cost than what we would have to charge the faculty. The Graduate School has been looking for a number of years for a site. They have raised a fair amount of contributions and gifts for this facility. And as a result, we have been working with the Graduate Center to be able to put the, the graduate housing on this site. When we ran the numbers, we did the pro forma, with the equity that they were able to put into the project, it brought the rents down to where we believe, and the Graduate School believes, are the right rents for graduate students to be paying, as well as there are going to be a few faculty apartments in the building as well. So we are still working out the specifics of this project. But if we need to move, we need to move very quickly because, as everyone knows, the market's changing. We have a bank, HTC is prepared to do the bonds. So we'd like authorization to proceed in light of the fact that if we, if we're able to make a good deal here.
Okay. So those are the 12 items, other than the CUNY Law School item. Could we just, we don't have any questions other than the one on the CUNY Law School item, right?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, hearing none. All right, those 12 items are moved. What I'd like is a vote, I guess, to go into executive session. Because it's only appropriate that the lawyers have a find that a Law School item needs to go into executive session. Come on.
Second.
Clear the room.
Okay.
All right, so welcome back into public session. Do we need to thank your staff?
Yes, I would just like to thank my staff, Jennifer Friedman and Dana Sunshine, who have worked tirelessly on this project.
Thank you. All right, so we were in executive session discussing some business items with a financial institution that required confidentiality still. But we're, we'd now like to have a public discussion of policy item number two, which is the CUNY School of Law. The first issue is, can we have a motion to amend the resolution before us to strike the word "tax exempt" on the bonds?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, so the amended resolution is now before us. Do you want to just explain it or?
Yes.
Just need to, just need to move it.
Just need to move it?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is moved. With that, we're adjourning. We have a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to express my appreciation for Vice Chancellor Whitehall's continued aggressive pursuit of better facilities for this university. We see, we see at this meeting, it's really something we need and we're glad we're getting it. Thank you very much.
All we need is the money.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, with that, we're adjourned.